Good evening. And welcome to the Southeast Delco School District Board, the School Directors Committee of the Whole, Thursday, June 20th, 2024. I'm going to hand this meeting off to Dr. Sanchez.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. We are going to get started in hopes of having a very efficient meeting tonight. Want to invite to the podium our friends from the Education Item, and I believe we're starting with Dr. Gibbs Taber.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy end of the school year.
Yay.
Yay. All right, so for education items, Items 1, 2, 3, as well as Item 4 and 5 are asking for approval from the Southeast Delco School District School Board for the contracts for extended school year programming for the following schools for students who actually are attending approved private schools currently right now. I do see an omission in number 5. So for school number, for item number 1, the first school is Mill Creek School. We have one student who is attending ESY. The second school, bullet number 2, is for HMS for two students who attend that program. For item number 3, Pennsylvania School for the Deaf, we're asking for four students to be approved to go to their ESY program. The item number 4, Overbook School for the Blind, there is one student who attends that program that needs approval to go to their extended school year program. Item number 5 is actually for Cades, which is George Crothers. So we need to add that there. And we do have a number of students who goes to that program in Swarthmore. 11 students are asking for approval to go to their ESY program. Item number 6 is for next school year. Some of the schools have sent their contracts out early for the 24, 25 school year. So there's one student who currently attends the Melmark School, who they have invited back again next year. There is one student who attends the Bancroft School. They are inviting him back next year. And the last item that is from the Special Education Department is item number 8, and this is approving the independent contractor agreement between Child Guidance Resource Centers and Southeast Delco School District for the 24, 25 school year, not to exceed the amount to be paid from the general fund. This is for the two mental health providers that we have at Academy Park High School that provide outpatient services here in district, right inside of Academy Park. So we have two part-time workers that are equivalent to one worker, if you will, for that amount to be paid for the year. Any questions about Items 1 through 8?
No, I don't have any questions. I just got to make sure I'm not related to anybody.
I'll get you a list of the names.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I, I was just wondering if the program for child guidance is staying exactly the same as it was in previous years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gibbs Taber. We are going to invite Dr. Ryan to the mic to talk about the next few items.
So on page 2, number 9 is a student incident that happened back in May. It just wasn't wrapped up in time for the May Board Meeting. There is an expulsion agreement in place that because of the late timing of the incident will carry over into the next school year. Parents have signed off. We've signed off. Kid has already started that. Consequences just didn't make the May Board Meeting. Number 10 is a contract we've done the last couple of years. Criticare supplies us with nursing services for either an individual student, if they need one, or if one of our nurses is out, it sort of acts as our sub-nurse agency. The rate you see there, the $69 per hour, that is the rate of an RN. If they send us an RN, that's their hourly rate, but if they send us an LPN or a certification below that, then the rates drop accordingly. And like I said, we've been using them for the last couple of years. And then number 11 will also be included in a discussion in Human Resources. We are entering into a contract again with Cardinal Point for security services in our buildings. There will be discussion about moving towards a more district-based security personnel, but until we can get from a point of where we are to fully staff with district personnel, we need sort of a stopgap company to help us through that transition. And that should have all been sent out with your packet or however you get the information from Kalina. We do have one piece of information we have to secure with Cardinal Point, and that is how they, excuse me, how they train some of their employees, but I'm going to reach out to the Cardinal Point person on Monday to make sure that gets included in the contract. And I think that's it, unless there are questions. Okay.
Oh, there we go. I just want to ask the board about the Cardinal Point. We aren't going to renew their contract?
I believe we said it was for one year.
We said it was for one year?
For one year, for us to allow us to discover what we were, what our plans were moving forward. Unless I'm mistaken, I believe that's what we had all agreed was one year because we didn't have enough time to come up with an alternative before this contract ended.
Well, what about the other contract? Safe corridors? Okay, but I'm still asking. I mean, are we going to keep them too? Or, I, because I thought we, I thought it was something different. That's why I'm asking.
So as Dr. Ryan said, we, during this last year, we've looked at how it's been going between the additional security that we needed through Cardinal Point. It was very difficult to hire for those positions. They've allowed, they've helped us. We've gotten better in filling those positions. Later on, you're going to see something that we are recommending and requesting for the board to consider, the change of 10-month positions to 12-month positions of security guard. It would allow us to hire the positions that have been empty. We have people literally who we've offered and their response has been, we're not interested in the 10-month, we're interested in 12-month position. It would allow us to be less reliant on an outside vendor for such an important position. We appreciate the work that they're doing because they are needed. Simultaneously, we have the relationship with Safe Corridors. Safe Corridors, they're not a security firm. They are providing the opportunity to engage with students in a different way. We see that it is very successful and productive, but the numbers aren't what we need at the high school. So the conversation we've had as administration is how do we continue both contracts? So we, to do that, we're decreasing the number of guards that would be part of the Cardinal Point, and we're also decreasing the number of individuals that are part of Safe Corridors. We're going to use them differently as well. Instead of having 20 of the Safe Corridors at the high school, we're going to have 10 at the high school and two at each of our 1 through 8 grade buildings. This is after having conversations with the administrators. So we've taken the feedback, the information learned from this first year, and now we are shifting how we're using both vendors with the hopes of becoming completely independent with the security guards. But the two things are connected but different, so we wanted to make sure they're presented separately because they are. There's a one-year contract is what we're asking the board for Cardinal Point because the plan is to continue to move towards hiring those positions to be Southeast Delco staff members.
Oh, because I don't remember having that conversation at all. I thought that we was going to eliminate Cardinal Points and keep Safe Corridors on board. That's the last time we had our meeting.
Which is, which is true. The last time we were talking about...
Yeah, so I don't understand.
But again, we didn't have a meeting.
Right, so I mean...
I'm talking about the board.
Right, so that's why I'm saying, where did this come from? Where we decided to keep Safe Corridors? And it didn't come to the board, that's what I'm saying.
So that's the recommendation from the administration to the board. The board didn't do their part.
What you mean?
We didn't meet to talk about these things. So that's why we're here right now. So we can talk about it right now, Ms. Woodfolk, if you like.
Right, but I, I mean, I don't know where you're getting it from that we wasn't here. I mean, I'm, I know I was sitting in this seat and I didn't...
Remember we said we just want to schedule a meeting to talk about these two organizations?
Well, I think this is going to be a problem because to me, this is a blind side. You just put this on the agenda and expect us to vote on it a week later? That's not fair.
This is a recommendation from the administration. So you don't have to...
I know I don't have to, but the last time we had a meeting, we had a meeting with the principal at Academy Park, and he stated what he needed and what he didn't need. So, what he didn't need. So I just don't understand, all of a sudden, you put this on the agenda. Obviously, you've been knowing about it, but I didn't know anything about this.
So I know about it because you know about it?
No, I just, I just learned about it today.
And what I'm saying is that this is what the administrator is recommending on this agenda. So did I have a discussion with people about this? No, I was in the same meeting as you were.
Right, I'm not, I'm not saying that you were, but I'm just saying that if the board was thinking one thing in one meeting, now you come to us, to the board, and then you're going to put this down here, I don't think that's fair.
So would you like us to table this?
No, no, not on one of us to table. The board needs to discuss it even more to see if we all agree on it.
So are you recommending that we schedule a meeting?
I mean, we can, it all depends on the board.
And so that's what I'm asking.
If the board is satisfied with this, then I guess I have to go along with it. But if they have some concerns or questions, I'm for it.
So is there any other discussion?
To Ms. Woodfolk, your point, I believe, I believe the administration did hear us out, and in the future, we will be eliminating one of them.
Right.
But I think what they're sharing here is they need a little bit of time so they can hire people before we get rid of Cardinal Point.
So are you trying to hire out your own staff?
Yes, so as Dr. Sanchez had shared, he's asking us to also, further in the agenda, vote on changing the part-time, the 10-month positions...
Right.
...to 12-month positions for security to make it easier for them to actually be able to hire in-house security. It seems as though people are turning down the positions because they don't want to work 10 months out of the year, they want a full-time 12-month position. So I think that's part of their plan, to try to change on the 12 months, give them the school year to fill all those positions, and then hopefully we can eliminate Cardinal Point next year. I think that's what they're asking.
Okay, well, the board's for it, let's go along with it.
Is there any other further discussion? I just have a question. How many Cardinal Points are we going to have?
I believe it's 11.
11.
And we did ask them to remove the names of the buildings so that we had freer authority to move them where our needs were, depending on hiring and absences and things like that, which they have agreed to.
Thank you.
And one more question, and we have 11 Cardinal Points, correct?
The contract is for 11, yes.
For 11 employees, what about for the Safe Corridors?
18.
Is it 18?
Yeah, 10, sorry.
Why is it 18?
Well, Dr. Sanchez just shared that there would be 10 at the high school instead of 20.
Right.
And I think he said two at each of the 1 through 8 buildings. So that would be, that's eight plus 10.
Okay, so it's going to be one, 1 through 8 buildings for...
Two each.
For Cardinal Points?
No, 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 Safe Corridors.
Say, I'm sorry, Safe Corridors.
Yeah, so two at all the four, 1 through 8 buildings, and then 10 at the high school instead of 20.
So we are not having any Safe Corridors in high school?
10 at the high school.
Safe Corridors?
Yes. So a total of 18 from Safe Corridors, 10 at the high school.
Okay, I got you. Okay, yeah, thank you.
I do, and that also was directly feedback from the principal. After a year, that is the tipping point where there's too many bodies in the hallway versus not enough. So he requested 10.
So are you having the Safe Corridors, you going to have them like you did last year? Like one up front and one in the back?
For the high school?
No.
For the 1 to 8?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's feedback, you know, we will welcome the feedback as to where to place them. They'll be obviously involved with dismissal and arrival, but then once they're in the building, they're in different hallways.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one more question? Could you just forward to the board the Safe Corridors contract? I think we got Cardinal Point twice by mistake.
No, okay, yeah, we received it today, so I'll get that to you probably while we're in this meeting. Number 12.
So number 12, we had brought this to the board's attention, I want to say, in January or February. Communities and Schools is going to pilot a program in our high school. They will work with 120 students who are having difficulty, mostly with attendance, but it is open for other things. They have a contract with us for the first year, you can see the amount there, and these, it will place two, I think they call them site coordinators or caseworkers, two individuals in the building that will have direct contact with students, working in conjunction with administration and counseling and things like that. But their aim is to improve the high school experience for up to 120 students. The reason it's 120 is because it is a 60 to 1 caseload for the amount of kids that they can work with. That comes from them. And they are slated, Mr. Sheridan and I met with them, actually, a couple of us met with them about two weeks ago in the library. They are off and running, trying to gather candidates for those two positions, and Mr. Sheridan and I have to participate in those interviews so that we can select the best people for those positions for the high school. If it works for the high school, we'll probably come back to the board and talk about expansion, but we want to see how it goes as a pilot program first, and we decided that the high school was the biggest need.
So I'm going to invite Dr. Larry now up to the mic to share almost a preview of two very exciting programs that we are looking into, and there is great potential for us to partner with as it relates to impacting our reading scores and the support to little ones on literacy.
Absolutely, so good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
See everyone here. So a little preview of some of the work that we're going to be engaging with over the summer, nothing that you are voting on or anything, just as like a little heads up for some of the exciting stuff we've got coming down the pike. So we spent a lot of time talking about math, 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 and you've also heard me talk a lot about the new steel standard implementation for science that's coming down the pike. We wanted to also touch upon one of our most important areas, which is obviously literacy. So first thing that we are looking at, very early stages, but we wanted to give the board kind of a little preview of what we're looking at. Dr. Sanchez scheduled a meeting with some stakeholders in the district to take a look at a really innovative program called Read Alliance. Read Alliance is, we're still working through many, many, many of the details, including pilot site, where we're going with this, amount of students that we want to offer this to. But in a quick, quick nutshell, this is a really innovative program that really focuses on early literacy skills and developing early literacy skills with our students, but a little bit of a twist, which is kind of cool. It's not just them coming in and working with our kids, it's actually embracing teen leaders that will be supporting and working with the folks from the Southeast Delco School District, along with Read Alliance, to come in and support our youngest learners, first and second grade. So it's a really innovative program, approximately 45 minutes of instruction after school hour, so it's additional time, additional work with literacy for our youngest students, but with our own students who are attending school in high school, who will be supporting that initiative with our youngest students. So that's just a little bit of a preview of what we're looking at. We have a lot more research, a lot more work to do over the summer, but we wanted to let you guys know that just because it's summer doesn't mean that we're stopping. Dr. Sanchez set that up, and we are actively working through that program right now and getting more information.
Thank you. So the question I had, will these, the teen leaders will be our students, and so will they be able to use that as voluntary hours?
Great question. There's stuff that we have to work through. There is, in some cases, and I don't want to say the exact model will be replicated here because each district's different, this is a firm that works with districts across the area, but they're based out of New York City. There are some students who were compensated for their time, so we have to look at that. Obviously, you can't volunteer but be compensated at the same time. So we have to look at that, but that's a great question.
Right, so I'm just saying, if it's a senior that wants to do it and they need those volunteer hours, would they be able to do that?
I'm assuming that if they were not compensated, it probably would be okay, but that's definitely something we'll post to the leadership team next time we have a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I had a question. You said that it would be 45 minutes after school. Would we be providing transportation home for these students that are doing this?
That was a great question. That was something that did come up. While we don't have the logistics planned out, we want to make sure that, you know, we're talking first and second grade students, so we do have to come up with provisions to make sure that they're safely either picked up by a parent, if it's a voluntary pickup, or if we offer some kind of transit service.
Because I would hate to see it that it's children who are taking buses are being excluded from it because they can't get home.
No problem. So that's a little preview of stuff that we will be working on during July and August and hopefully have an update for the board later on this summer. Second, just real quick, not as exciting as Read Alliance, but we're always looking at how we can modernize our literacy offerings, and through our department, the work of our teachers, our curriculum writers, Dr. Rennick Smack, and the entire curriculum enterprise that is our district, we've been really looking at how K through 8 literacy works in our schools. So we, as you know, we now have a streamlined literacy continuum, K through 8. We adopted the HMH Into Reading and Into Literature series that's used in all of our district classrooms. We are looking to pilot a really innovative program, and again, very early discussions, we don't have a contract or anything like that to propose to, but we are looking to pilot a really unique program called AMIRA Learning in one of our schools for next year. AMIRA is a computerized program that actually, see, got a nod right here, it's a computerized program that takes actual dictation from children, and it, the software, the artificial intelligence, it's AI for a good thing, can actually decode and provide supports for that student. So actually listen to a child speak in its own way, in the child's own way, and then come up with, okay, you did this really good, here are some things that we're going to focus on and models a pathway. So before we dive all in, we want to do a pilot. I've had initial pilot discussions with HMH, just waiting to get some more information back about what that looks like, how many licenses, what school, and everything like that. So that will be the next step. But two really exciting things, literacy-centric, focusing on our youngest learners to ensure that we are grade level proficient by fourth grade. That's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Excuse me, Dr. Larry. So I know when you first came, you talked about this program called the IB Program, the International Baccalaureate Program. One of our board members, Ms. Harris Johnson, Vice President Harris Johnson, she actually attended a graduation for a high school at IB school. And I would like, if you don't mind sharing it, and can we still continue to look into that program? So would you like to share about it?
Yes. There was several things about the high, the graduation itself that I really liked. One of them was, they had a carpet that ran down the center of the aisle, and on that carpet, it had the high school's name and their colors, no year of graduation, so they could continuously use that one. All the graduates came in down that center aisle and then either went to the left to sit down. They also had an area to the right that all of the faculty came in, in their regalia. They all came in and they sat to the right, and during the superintendent or the principal's remarks, he recognized them as a group, not individual names, and, you know, gave them a little speech about thank you for the year, blah, blah, blah. I also liked when we have students who pass away during the year for whatever reason, we always have that parent or guardian just standing in the audience. They had the parents actually walk across the stage in place of that student, and then whoever's giving out the diplomas, thank you, the diplomas, they actually, the parents actually received their diplomas at that particular time rather than going back to the normal procedure that is done for the students to receive their diplomas. I also liked, they had all the, had this band at the front of the stage, not on the side. It was right in front of the stage. The stage was dressed very nicely, and as they were giving out the diplomas, everyone left the stage area. The boards were recognized, they, everyone left, and the only ones that were there were the superintendent and the principal, and those people who were helping giving out the diplomas. And as the graduates were called up to be recognized on the stage, they had, they gave a teacher or someone at the top of that step, that they would be, right before they came on the stage, a slip of paper with their name, what their scholarship, if they received any scholarships, and what college they was going to, and what did they graduate with, a 4.5 or whatever, like that was all on that one card as that particular child was crossing to the stage. And it was, it was nice, you know, like I'm telling you about the things that I saw that I really liked. I took some pictures, and, oh, and also, which was really surprising, on the tickets, the students' graduation tickets that were given out to their parents or friends, on the back of this, that back of the ticket, it indicated what the guests could and could not wear. They could not wear jeans of any kind. Women could not wear short skirts, it had to be finger length. Why? Because all of the guests were up on the low, upper, upper level, and, you know, it just looked nice, but they couldn't wear it. And as the people lined up outside before admission, they were making announcements of the dress attire, and they definitely said, if you do, if you, these are the rules, and if you do come and you're dressed in these jeans or whatever, you are not allowed in the graduation under no circumstances at all. And the handicap people were on the floor, and they were to the left in the back of the faculty, but on the left, so did not interfere with the graduation as they proceeded in, and they also had the color guards. You, the youth color guards, they came with the flag and everything and was doing that. But it was very, very nice.
So as a, I'm not sure what school, what that was or where the school was, but as an IB school, International Baccalaureate, you know, I mean, you've heard me talk about it before, I was honored, and we brought Mayfair up from a typical elementary school, and we're still, unless I'm mistaken, still to this day the only public, fully authorized IB school in the Commonwealth at, at Mayfair, which is not a lot for bringing up academic standards about different modes of instruction, project-based learning, all that good stuff. So it's definitely something that I was immensely proud of, and for any conversation in Southeast Delco to start looking at that model is definitely something that's really cool.
And just let me mention this, this was Hampton's High School, Hampton, Virginia. And I also asked them, because they had four other, they had four high schools altogether in Hampton, and each one of those high schools, the students that attended, it was a particular, whatever's topic or subject that they were going to specialize in... it was a particular, whatever topic or subject that they were going to specialize in, then that, you would go to one of those four schools. So that, that meant that everybody that was going to go into engineering were not at all those four schools. They had one school picked out for all the engineering. And when they, they were called up to receive their diplomas, they told them, you know, if they got high scores, low scores, and things like that. But that's how they, that's how they did it down in Virginia. Every, and I told them, I said, well, in Southeast Elko, we only one, we only have one high school. So everybody is just one group that in, in one school being taught everything. So we're not fortunate enough at this point to be able to have more than one high school.
A lot of elementary, there's three. There's the PYP, the MYP, and the DP. The DP is the program that operates inside of a high school. A lot of the PYP primaries program, the MYP middle years program is a K to eight model. So a lot of high schools do offer an international baccalaureate as a school, in a school. It's a very charter heavy and a lot of the best of the best public schools around the area have a program like that. So that's something that the board is interesting to see. We could definitely have some really cool conversations about that later.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting, really.
Would, if we were to take this discussion further, would it be in place of AP classes? Or would we have a dual? How would we work that?
So in the high, in the elementary, middle school model, I, my strong recommendation is that you go on an all-in approach so that every student, how do you have a high achieving sect within a building and then have some students participate, some students still? Which is why we're, you know, before I came here, every student received the IB framework, the IB continuum in the elementary school, in the, in the high school. It really depends on the construct of the school, how we set up the bell schedule, how we set up the instructional offerings, what the course catalog looks like. But it is absolutely possible to have an IB track and an AP track within the school. But you, you'll have to, we'd have to do research and we had to look at those dual schools. You'll see a lot of times that sometimes the IB track becomes a little bit more favorable for some students just because of, of the project-based learning and the multidisciplinary learn that occurs there. But my recommendation is if that is something that we want to pursue, that we go see a school that has both and we can talk about the pros and cons of that. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Larry. I'd like to turn it over now to Mr. Butler for the finance.
Good evening, everyone. I have a number of items here that I'd like to review, starting with item one. This is a resolution to engage the Donovan Group to provide community and public relation support and services. Item two is the resolution to approve end-of-year budget transfers. Number three, this is an engagement of an accounting consultant that will review our statements prior to our formal auditors coming into the, coming into the district. Item four, this is, this, and I will cover this in my presentation. This is the general fund budget for 2425. Last month, I stated that as of that date, and it's still the same, total revenues in the amount of $108,390,511 and expenditures in the same amount. This budget calls for a 2.5% tax increase, which equates to 0.7817 mil increase, taking it from 31.2716 to 32.0533. Number five is just another resolution that is in reference to approving the millage as it's set aside. Number six is for interim real estate taxes. And we've approved this each year. Interim real estate taxes are for properties of new construction, and that's a separate tax. The next one, item seven, is real estate transfer. This tax is for properties that are taxed when they sell in the district. Item eight, this is in reference to the homestead exclusion. This is also a property, or I should say a tax reduction program for individuals who own property in the district that live in the property and application is submitted and is approved. And then they are eligible for real estate tax reduction. Again, I will cover this in my presentation. The, in this, the funding for this is from gambling tax in state. This year, the amount is $3,283,657.21. Last year, it was $2,733,714. That's an increase of $549,943. In item two A, this is the approval of the number of individuals that have approved applications for a homestead reduction. Last year, we had 5,880. This year, there are 5,914 applications that have been approved. That number is divided into the 3 million, I'm sorry, 3,283,657. So again, 3,283,657 divided by 5,914. That come, if you look in item three, you will see that the, those approved individuals will get a tax reduction of $555.23. Last year, that number was $464.92. Item four is, is a resolution that, that references the assessed value that's equated to the tax, the Homestead Reduction Act. So in this case, each piece of property will have a, a reduction of their tax assessment. And that reduction this year is $17,322.23. And number five is just a continuation of that. Number six is talking about just the approval of the taxes. And if you go to page four, you will see under item six, one, two, and three, this talks about the opportunity for taxpayers to have installment payments. So in our district, there are three. The first installment is August 1st, second one is October 1, and the final one is December 1. Are there any questions thus far? Again, that, what I just covered will be in my present, will be in my presentation afterwards. Oh, I'm sorry.
For finance, number three, the consulting firm.
Yes.
Is this to continue the work that we don't have the positions filled for? Is that what the job descriptions would fall under? The two positions that we didn't fill yet, the accounting job and the?
No.
Okay.
This, this individual has worked with the district probably for the last eight to 10 years.
Oh, okay, so it's a continuation.
And it's just another level of oversight.
Got it, okay.
Item nine on page four. This is, we're upgrading our HR software. And the current company is Criterion. And this will help us move that process forward, this, from a software point of view.
Mr. Butler, excuse me, Mr. Butler. For Criterion, well, they also have training and stuff. How long is the train, is like a year training if necessary?
Is Ms. Woolley, yes, Ms. Woolley, is it for the entire year or?
There are train the trainers and then we will be going out and training the individuals.
Okay. Okay, and then we still have support for up to a year, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, item 10 is the exoneration of church properties from taxes being levied. And there will be a list of churches that are eligible for that. Item 11 is?
Mr. Butler, just one question.
Sure.
10, did the Holy Spirit school get added?
I will look at the list.
For the school?
You said Holy Spirit.
School, where the charter school is trying to move into? Because it's still a church property. I mean, it's, they don't use it for church purposes.
Right, so what we would look into to see whether or not that portion that, if it's a separate parcel, then it would be, would be taxable because there, I believe, because it's real estate, but we would have to pursue that.
Madam Chairman, I did contact our auditor. I believe this came up, I'm sorry, our praiser, I believe this came up last month. And he said he's going to be looking into it. So I will follow up with him and hopefully have an answer by next week.
Okay, thank you. Mr. John.
Yeah, one of the things that I noticed, that the old convent is now the administration building for the new charter school. Is that taxable?
Oh, what a decent state. The rectory. The rectory that's right next to, so it's the church, the rectory, and then that school.
So you're saying?
The rectory was empty for years. Now it's an administration building for the charter school.
If that's the case, in my opinion, it would not be exempt. But that's who we're going to have the praiser confirm.
They hung us up.
You're correct, yes. If it's a business enterprise, it's not, it's not exempt.
May I ask a question? If they claim that they're using the profit from the rent of those buildings for improvement to the church, would the property still stay exempt?
I'd have to research that issue. Is that, do you have information that's what's occurring?
No, but I had, I had posed this question back in February. So I was just trying to do some research on my own. And one of the attorneys that I had asked, he said that it all depends on how they say they're using that money.
And what would your, what would your?
If they use the profit from the funds that they're collecting from rent to improve the actual church where they're still holding services, would that leave the school building and the rectory still exempt?
I'd look into that also, sure.
So, because I, I know I sent all the parcel IDs and everything back in February.
Well, but, but why would, why would a charter school be giving their profit back to the church?
No, I'm sorry, not the charter school's profit. The charter school will be paying rent to the church, the profit the church makes off the rent.
And if they would be using that to improve the church property?
Right.
Okay, I understand now.
Okay, item 13, this is the Pennsylvania Trust. What we have to do each year to be in compliance with GASB 75, which has to do with accounting, accounting valuation of post-employment retirement benefits. And that has to be reporting on our financial statements. So this is just to approve Conrad Segal to calculate those actuary numbers. Item 14, this is just our membership in the Delaware County Consortium for Excellence in Equity for the 2425 school year at an annual fee of $12,000. Number 15 is our contribution of $1,000 to each municipality, or I should say each library, Collendale, Fallcroft, Sharon Hill, and Darby Township. Now, I do know that, yeah, Darby Township, there's still a question as to whether or not?
They have no library on the north or the south side.
Great, what, the one that was open, closed?
They never staffed it.
They never opened.
Okay. All right, so I'll modify that resolution to be Collendale, Fallcroft, and Sharon Hill boroughs. Okay, and the last item is what was talked about earlier. This is the engagement of state corridors for the 2425 and 2526 school years. Oh, I'm sorry. 11 is appointment of myself as a primary agent to serve on the Delaware County School District Joint Purchasing Board. And 12, this is part of the year in close, again, to review budget transfers within that this year.
And Mr. Butler, some of these that you've asked or suggested for approval are being renewed. I mean, this is not someone that's coming in brand, spank brand new. But they've been doing this in the past and you're just redoing it for an additional year or two.
This is for which one?
Most of the, you know?
So, so most of these resolutions, 90% of these resolutions, probably 95, are repeats every single year.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah, that we had to do every, yes, we had to do these every single year to be in compliance. Now, with the budget, with the budget items, of course, the numbers change. So that's why I'll move into doing my presentation. You're welcome. So here we have, this is just a table of contents. It's the 2425 budget summary, object codes, function codes, review the Act I historical data, and further explain the tax increase impact. So as I had mentioned before, in looking at the middle column, the budget at this point is $108,390,511. In previous, in the previous presentation, the local revenue was $549,943,000 higher. And the state revenue was $549,943,000 lower. As I explained in one of the previous resolutions, the homestead amount of money that is allocated to the school district this year went from $2,733,714 to $3,283,657. Now, that increase of 549,943 is a direct connect to what goes back, which is given back to taxpayers that have been approved on the homestead exclusion. But the total, again, the total is just a balancing between local revenue and state revenue. The expenditures are the same as they were my last presentation, the 108,390,000, I'm sorry, 108,390,511. And you can see that it's a balanced budget at this time. And this is just a pie chart of what it appears or how it looks. So 45, 49% is state, 46% is local, and 5% is federal. This is just another analysis of the 108,393,438. This is by object code. Object code will be specific to, in this case, salaries, benefits, professional services, other property services, supplies, property, other objects, and other uses. Just bringing your attention, drawing your attention to other objects and other objects. This is where, between other objects and use of other funds, are the debt service payments. For the most part, in other objects, that's the principal amount of money we pay each year. And in, I'm sorry, in other objects, that's the interest amount that we pay. And in other objects, other uses is the interest amount that we pay. we pay. In our debt service. Again, this is just a pie chart of how that looks. Uh, this uh, particular slide has to do with function codes, uh, and this is regular instruction, special education, so this is looking at our programming in uh, uh, in a different, in a different way that includes all those other object codes I had mentioned. So, regular instruction includes uh, the salaries and benefits, and contracted services, those things. So that's where all these categories are uh, aligned. Uh, so we have regular instruction, special ed, vocational education, other instructional program, and higher education. We have pupil personnel, computer-assisted learning, uh, administration, pupil health, business operations, operations and maintenance, uh, transportation, personnel services, and other support services. And then I had mentioned before, those two line items, debt service, and that's the total for debt service. Also, the line before, I'm sorry, I missed the line before, student activities, this is the community services and, and student activities, sports programming, uh, anything related to extracurricular for students. Again, totaling one hundred eight million, three hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred thirty-eight. Again, this is a pie chart of what it appears to look like from a visual point of view. Uh, this slide has to do with Act One index, and this is the historical uh, analysis. Uh, so, I'll just go back to, start with like, uh, twenty eighteen, nineteen. So, the first column is the base for statewide. Uh, so there are school districts that cannot increases, increase taxes over two point four percent in eighteen nineteen, uh, and that depends on the wealth of the district. Uh, for less wealthier district, there's a calculation uh, that is specific to each, to that school district. So for us, uh, when the base was two point four, the calculation said that we could increase taxes three point six. In that particular year, uh, taxes were increased three point six. Uh, moving down, uh, the base was two point three, three point four for us, for Southeast Delco, taxes were increased three percent. Uh, twenty, twenty-one, two point six, three point nine, and taxes were increased three point nine. Twenty-one, twenty-two, three percent base, uh, Southeast Delco, four point six, taxes were increased three point nine. Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, three point four base, taxes uh, for Southeast Delco, five point one, taxes increased three point nine. Twenty-three, twenty-four, base four point one, Southeast Delco, six point two, there was a zero percent tax increase. Uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, the base is five point three, Southeast Delco, eight point one percent, and this proposed budget is to increase two point five percent. Okay, so this uh, uh, is uh, calculation or a presentation on uh, the tax calculation itself. So, twenty-three, twenty-four, as I said before, there was uh, no tax increase. You will see right here, this is the real estate, the homestead tax reduction amount. Uh, so that comes off and goes back to taxpayers. Uh, and then we have, in this district, a ninety-five point five percent collection rate, which is, which is excellent. Uh, moving to twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, and also notice that the assessed value, this one billion, five forty-five million, is, uh, went up ten million dollars. And as I had said before, the state property tax reduction for homestead, uh, went from the two million, seven thirty-three, seven fourteen, to three million, two eighty-three, six fifty-seven. And then, this is the two percent, and this is just the calculation of what the mileage increase for the year, or for um, for this, yeah, for this year, and then how it totals out uh, as a total package. Or total cost. Uh, this again is uh, just a different perspective on the tax increase last year. You can see under twenty-three, twenty-four, the first top box on the left, uh, there's a zero percent. Uh, if your property is assessed at seventy thousand dollars, in total, last year, your school taxes amounted to two million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, I, I'm sorry, two thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars. I'm sorry, yes. Sorry. I'll repeat that number, two thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars. Uh, if your property going upward is assessed at two hundred forty thousand, and again, this is not market value, this is assessed value. If your property is assessed at two hundred forty thousand dollars, your school taxes would be seven thousand, five hundred five dollars. Typically, assessed values are eighty-five percent of your market value. Moving down to this uh, lower left, the two and a half percent, if your property is assessed at seventy thousand, uh, your increase in property tax for this year, for the entire year, is fifty-five dollars. Again, going down to uh, two forty, uh, if your property is assessed at two forty, your property in, your property taxes would go up one hundred eighty-eight dollars for the year. In total, two forty, your total tax bill is seven thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars. Uh, if your property is assessed at seventy thousand, your total tax bill this year would be two thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars. Uh, if anyone has any questions about their specific uh, their specific uh, assessed value and what their property taxes would be, you can certainly contact my office, but I tried to align this where it's pretty much moving every ten thousand dollars, and folks should fall in between there somewhere, one way or another. And that was it. So this is what we've covered since February. Uh, the recommendation uh, for uh, the budget as it is, as it stands right now, uh, will be uh, on the June twenty-seventh, uh, board agenda for adoption. Uh, if there's anything that happens in between now and then, as far as state revenue, those adjustments will be made, and I will uh, present that uh, prior to uh, this resolution coming up for vote. Any questions?
The one thing that concerns me is the debt. What, how soon do you see us being able to pay that off?
Okay, debt service in this district, typically in districts, it's uh, a debt service for, that would extend out um, probably twenty-five years. And then there are opportunities where you can restructure your debt based on interest rates, which would lower the impact. Uh, in uh, with Southeast Delco, uh, we uh, did do a refinance, uh, to keep debt service level, but it would also give us uh, an opportunity to look at other capital projects in the district.
Would that accommodate something like the uh, furnished Delco, like a capital project if you revised?
Yes, so we have a preliminary feasibility study, uh, that Mr. Curry spearheaded, uh, and we would just revisit that, uh, and uh, uh, talk about uh, how the board, how the administration sees the district, uh, the best fit for the district, and how we should move forward, uh, with the instructional programming. As it re- as, I'm sorry, as it relates to facilities.
Question. Um, if we are blessed with a budget, if we are blessed with a budget, would the two percent decrease?
If, if the state budget?
If we ever get one?
Oh, if, if, if-
If we ever get one.
Yes, because I, I, as I had reported before, this budget is conservative, uh, and I increased it, I guess I took their state revenue, looked at it, but then I took our current, what we are getting in the twenty-three, twenty-four, and I want to say that I may have increased it seven percent, which still, there's a uh, there's a gap from what the current governor's budget says compared to what I have in the budget. So, if I know by next week that uh, we're going to receive more state revenue, then I'll certainly make that adjustment, and, and see what the impact is on the tax increase. Uh, if that number is not settled or approved prior to June twenty-seventh, and there is a windfall of some type, then that would also be reported, and we would uh, report that as a windfall in the ensuing year. And that, that would go into our fund balance, and then we can make a determination in the twenty-five, twenty-six year as to what we want and where we feel comfortable that our fund balance should be. Right now, the fund balance is somewhere around five point six million dollars. And I'll remind, I, I just, just to keep it in everyone's mind, that you will recall, uh, a number of years back, the district was one point two million dollars in the red, and that's where we don't want to be. Um, because we have other capital projects and other instructional initiatives that we have to move forward on, uh, and we can only do that if we uh, show the banking, the finance folks that we are good stewards of taxpayers' money, and we are uh, moving forward with uh, maintaining uh, our financial stability.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Butler. Like to invite now Ms. Mrs. Woolley. She'll be presenting items for Human Resources. She's gonna have a very cheerful and positive report for all of you.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, audience. Uh, my name is Stephanie Woolley. I am the Director of Human Resources. Um, I want to draw your attention to some of the items in Human Resources on the agenda. I would like to approve, have approved the retirement of Deborah Carney. She has been with the district for sixteen years. She was the secretary of, to the principal at the Delcroft School, so she's retiring. Um, I would like to have two terminations approved for two classified employees, the resignation of five professional employees. I would like to ratify a resignation of a classified employee in food services, and I would like to have two professional staff, um, teachers, and the teacher's contract approved. We would like to have, number six, two classified employees approved for employment, and we would like to have a change of assignment to one of our own grant administrators, Leanne Hudson, to the special education supervisor.
Ms. Woolley, uh, you said the teacher contract, what, what are we doing?
The professionals, number five. We have two of those in the A C E A contract.
Oh.
The behavior interventionist and the speech-language pathologist.
Okay, thank you.
Those are too hard-to-fill positions. We are hiring two there. We would like to uh, ratify uh, some professional employments that are on a leave of absence. We have three listed there, one from Darby, Sharon Hill, and the kindergarten center. We also want to ratify a leave of absence for a school security officer. Then, we want to ratify two additional classified employees on a leave of absence as well. We're asking to, number eleven, we're asking to ratify the supplemental contracts for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and if you look at items one through seven, I like to say we lost six people, but we gained four accepting of our offers today for a health and physical education teacher, a special education teacher at the high school, a school psychologist as well. Okay? Then with that, I have seven offers on my desk to call people. I'm gonna call them on my day off to offer a verbal contingent offer. Um, so, we lost six, but we gained like fifteen people, if all of those seven that I call tomorrow accept. Okay? Thank you. Um, so, number twelve, we want to ratify the following speech therapists, um, counselors, teachers, lead substitutes, and aides for the E S Y K three program at the Delcroft School. We want to ratify, and number thirteen, we, for the K three A program at the Darby Township. We want to, number fourteen, we want to ratify special education writers, I E P writers for the summer program as well, and the names are listed there. Number fifteen, you see one individual listed there, but we need to ratify this because we want to add all the other um, secretaries at, throughout the district, district in number fifteen as well. Okay? Number sixteen, we talked about that a little bit earlier, sixteen and seventeen are together. We're having a hard time recruiting these school security officers because a lot of them are looking to have a full-time employment. It is a ten-month position at this time. We interviewed, along with the Director of Public Safety, but people are turning us down because they're saying, I'm not coming, giving up my twelve-month job at a hospital as a security guard to come here for a ten-month job. And we interviewed, we put the offers out there, but they're just turning us down. So we're just asking if you can, in number seventeen, approve the creation of the twelve-month security school officer positions from a ten-month to a twelve-month. And then in addition to that, number sixteen, we have seven current ten-month, full-time school security officers that are ten months. It's, we would like them converted to a twelve-month. Okay? So we're asking for that. So, number eighteen is something, it's a, a new initiative, but I want to read why we're asking for this. So colleagues, school districts nationwide are facing challenges recruiting and retaining special education teachers, resulting in a critical staffing shortage. While Southeast Delco School District has employees to secure our facilities today, we recognize that many of our employees can retire or otherwise separate at any time. As such, Dr. Sanchez and Human Resources are taking proactive strategic steps now to prepare for the future. Like other districts, we have encountered challenges attracting special education teachers. The hiring process can take an average of two months or longer to recruit and hire a hard-to-fill position. As a result, our recent job postings for Spanish teacher, science teacher, health and physical education, and special ed teacher candidates have yielded few applicants. To address this recruitment challenge, we want to advertise these positions again, but this time, we would like to offer a twenty-five hundred dollar stipend to attract applicants. This is payable to that new hire in December and June of their hired year, under the following conditions. One, the selected candidate must pass all background checks. Two, the selected candidate must successfully complete the full year. The next steps in our recruitment process involves all of you. I believe employee referrals are an exact, excellent way to reach solid applicants. You understand our mission and our vision, and can best vouch for our work culture, and speak to the benefits of working at the Southeast Delco School District. This means, if the board approves it, any employee who refers someone who is hired in one of those hard-to-fill positions will receive a five hundred dollar referral fee for each hired person.
Are you done? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
I, I have a question.
Oh, she's not done, okay, go ahead.
So, just in closing, working together, I am confident we can meet this important recrutive, recruitment initiative.
I, I have a question. You're saying that if you hire someone and they pass everything, that um, they get five hundred dollars?
The employee that refers somebody in one of those hired positions would receive the five hundred dollars.
Right, so where the two thousand, five hundred coming at?
So, if we hired, if you left the board and wanted to come work for us in one of those hard-to-fill positions, you would get twenty-five hundred dollars.
You have any applications?
Kindergarten center. So, I, uh, the question I have, Ms. Woolley, is um, if I refer you about fifteen people- So the question I have, Ms. Woolley, is if I refer you about 15 people, how does that work?
There is a cap, but you will get, there's a cap. There's a cap.
I can refer you, I can refer you some, some teachers.
Dr. Sanchez, save me.
It said any, it's, you started, any SED employee. I forgot, I'm employed by the state.
Right.
Any SDEA employee, custodians, operations.
Right.
There was a very valid question. Let's pretend there's an employee that isn't, that's an actual employee, refers eight of the 10 positions we're trying to fill. And we hire those eight people that they refer. They get eight times 500 for $1,000 to help us fill those eight of 10 positions.
So, I mean, I don't want to jump any farther.
So do you have a special advertisement for it?
It's only certain positions. If you look at numbers.
Right, I know, but I'm just asking, do you have a special advertisement for this?
We will, if approved, yes. But in addition to yard signs, but it's a non-voting item. I'll show you that in a, in a minute. But in addition to that, the way we're gonna try and recruit for it, if you see, I'm wearing it right now. And in the back, the hiring has a QR code on it. It's a QR code, and it tells you a hard-to-fill position at the back, okay? The QR code does work. So if you find yourself in the grocery store or something, you find somebody standing behind you, it's gonna lead you to our open positions on our website.
Oh, God, we're too close.
Ms. Woolley, I got, Ms. Woolley, I got one question.
Sure.
Now, do the person that they refer, an employee refers, do they have to work a certain amount of time, say 90 days?
A year.
Oh, a year, okay.
But the employee would receive their money in December.
Okay.
The new hire would receive part of it in December and the remaining at the end of the year.
At the end of the year or at the end of the year?
In June, at the end of that school year. They'll get the second half of it.
Okay. That's not bad.
Yep, so we're asking for that approval for those hard-to-fill positions, so.
You got a couple more questions?
Yeah, you, you mentioned that there was a cap on the number of employees or referrals, or?
I made a mistake. There is no cap.
Oh, okay, I was just checking, because I was gonna say that it wasn't.
Because if you bring us five, if you bring us five people, five times five, what is that?
But there is a cap on the number of open positions. These, this isn't for every position. This is for the hard-to-fill, high school, special ed, secondary math and science. And there could be a bold change by next week because we are having significant challenges filling the Spanish position. So they're very targeted positions and, and all the districts are, are wrestling for them. We think this is a way to make it sweeter for them, for a candidate, consider us.
Okay, so I was just, the only reason why I was checking is I don't believe it was mentioned in here. So this is what we're talking about, the MOU, yeah.
It has high schools, it's high school, special education.
Right, no.
So the MOU that you have is?
Is what we're talking about. And then, if you're talking about adding Spanish to this?
That's a possibility. We'll have a, we, we just lost the person that we thought was.
Was gonna take it, okay. So then, once we agree on this, then this would need to be signed by the president of the MOU and then?
The union has the vote on it and then sign it, yes.
So I've already had conversations with the union leadership, and they are in support of this.
Okay.
So before we took it to this level, I wanted to make sure that it wouldn't be a challenge for them as well. Mr. DiOrio, did you want to add anything as it relates to the other groups?
No, I think you covered everything, but I, I think earlier today, you and I discussed the possibility of the other bargaining unit being, being part of this and also certain administrators, except for cabinet members. So we can work on that also.
Ms. Woolley, would you be able to provide the board with any exit interview data? I'm especially concerned that a few of these resignations, I believe, were new hires, especially these specials teachers at Harris. We didn't even have that music teacher for very long. So did you do exit interviews and could you provide that data to the board, please?
Yes, I do have every one of those teachers exit interviews and nothing negative in them. A lot of them are just moving or was just looking to not be a teacher anymore, so. Good thing it wasn't anything negative. But yes, I will provide that information to Dr. Sanchez to get to you.
Mr. Lafferty?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I have, I have one question. Where is this money coming from?
The money is, which is a great question. There have, during this course of the year, there have been a number of vacant positions. So that money will fall out into fund balance and that will fund this initiative. This initiative, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, is for, is for this school year. It'll be a school year by school year basis. So next year, if we're at full capacity, then this program, this initiative would not take place next year.
Then the second part of the question would be, why does it have to be one year? Why can't you break it out into smaller amounts to make sure that the person stays for five years?
It's two installments. It's halfway through the year, two installments.
No, I'm talking about five years.
$2,500 over five years? They only get $500 a year.
You don't have it now.
I just don't think it would be attractive to applicants.
Correct. Actually, the bonuses that are out there now to recruit, even for like places like Wawa or Rudders, are incredible. So we are barely competing with some of the fast-food chains that are recruiting people. So it's a great idea for the economy of scale is concerned. But to make it enticing, they're gonna, they're gonna see, oh, wow, I've got an extra $1,200 in my check for the holidays, or I have an extra $1,200 in my check right before summer break. That becomes, I'm gonna be like, okay, then I'll consider Southeast. I'll go over any of the other 17 here in Delaware County.
Child cares are offered free, so.
So in addition to that, I attend the DCIU job-alike meetings, and that's where all of the HR directors from all of the Delaware County show up to meetings. And they don't offer stipends, so we're, we're one up on our competitors if this gets approved.
Also, to give you a back-end envelope calculation of a high-end estimate of the cost, for this year, it would be $45,000. And think about the impact of having those hard-to-fill positions filled. Those of you who've been at the high school know that it becomes a challenge when we're running with substitutes. But more importantly, those kids are not getting the education that they should be getting with a qualified person that should be in those rooms to deal with those special cases. So it is something that's a little extra compared to other districts, but I want to make sure all of our kids, whether they're regular ed or special ed, are getting a high-quality educational experience.
Okay. And then number 19, we're asking to approve a suffragally for a year for a health restoration. So some non-voting items, I already told you about the T-shirts, the walking T-shirt, the walking recruitment. You knew about the yard sign. But to celebrate our teachers, our administrators, and our office staff, we offered a smoothie event at the high school. It was pretty successful. We had a lot of turnout for that, that so much that the teachers at other schools were saying, "Hey, what are you gonna do for us?" So Dr. Sanchez listened, and we had a water ice event at each additional school where Fred's water ice came out and handed out water ices to our secretaries, our admin staff, and the main offices, and all of our teachers. So that was a pretty great turnout. Then in addition to that, we held a retirement dinner for eight retirees. All of them came out, took pictures, we gave them certificates, we chatted together, we ate together, and it was a great send-off for those eight retirees. All right? So that's all I have.
There's a question, I think it's on the table. Mr. Lafferty?
Well, first, I'd like to thank you for giving me the total dollar amount, so that way I can buy into it. Here's $45,000, it's not that bad. If they're folding, and you actually said it would be eliminated if they stayed, so I can buy into it.
So, Ms. Woolley, I don't know if you're aware of this. I commend this teacher for real, for real, because I don't know how she did it. But there was a teacher at Sharon Hill School that never took one day off. I told her, "God bless her soul," as a teacher. She's still working. So I don't know any other buildings that had the same thing that never took a day. So you have some at the high school. If you can give me those names so I can, I want to make sure I shop them out because that is a, coming to work for 180-plus days is, God bless your soul. Like, good, good job.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, policy. So we're gonna move into policy. Thank you, Dr. Ryan.
Yes, I do want to make a quick comment about parent-student advisory. We've typically done a meeting in the summer. I would say Ms. Woodfolk and Ms. Harris Johnson, if we want to do that again, we should probably meet the next week or two to try to plan that out. It's usually a pretty high-end thing when we tie it to tutoring. Policy is just one item. It is the second reading of the public comments at board meetings. There were no questions last month, and if there are none this month, it will be entered into policy after next Thursday night. That's as efficient as I can be.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ryan. Now, property, Mr. Kevin Curry.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have no voting items, just two non-voting items I would like to talk about. One is this week, the contractors working on our classroom and library modernization started the demo work at Harris Academy Park in Sharon Hill, and they are progressing nicely. We prepped the areas. Shout out to all the Academy Park staff that were boxing up, you know, books and material. And our staff got a lot of the, you know, furniture and things like that out of the way so that they can, you know, not miss a beat when they get in there to do some work. As construction progresses, I'll just keep the administrators informed, you know, because there's gonna be some areas in Academy Park that are gonna be off-limits for a few days, things like that. And that main lobby, but we'll coordinate with all administration on that, and especially at Sharon Hill and Harris. And then just moving into summer cleaning and just general repairs. The last two weeks, like I said, have just been busy finishing end-of-year activities at schools. And I'm kind of getting a chance to touch base with the principals of any building concerns as to add to the list and prioritize some other type of, you know, more involved repairs or, you know, painting projects and things like that through the district. So that is all I have tonight, if there's any questions.
I have another question. As far as summer cleaning and repairs, I was talking to Dr. Sanchez about this. Because you have, I wanted to know, first of all, do you have enough employees for, for the summer cleaning and repairs? Two, would you consider, like, some of the aides to come and, and help out? Because they only have 10 months of pay, and they wanted to work during the summer. Would you consider that?
So all the summer cleaning is handled by ServiceMaster, and they have the resources and equipment to bring in for the heavy lifting of the, you know, summer cleaning and stuff like that. Any type of projects that we would have that would need manpower, I would be open to have that discussion to get, you know, transportation aides or building aides available. At this time, I, I might not have something in mind, but in the future, that would be, you know, a good thing to look into if needed.
Okay.
You know, our staff, we're full staff. We're going to add a carpentry, or post a carpentry position soon. I actually was talking to Mrs. Woolley earlier this week. So that'll be an added position too, and a needed position as well to handle some of these. But, you know, work orders come in every day. We prioritize and, you know, the, the important ones will get done this summer.
Okay.
I, I have a question. With the cleanouts and things, and the remodeling, what happens to the old furniture? Do you, the ones, the furniture that's still in reasonably good condition, do we sell that off? Do we, like, have a garage sale?
Yeah, so we're looking into, we're looking into our options. I know at the high school, there was a lot of, some teachers took some of the good furniture that was left for their classrooms. Some of the chairs that were salvageable will be salvaged and reused at other libraries and things like that. There are some that are beyond repair. We have some of those computer corrals that I'm gonna look into reusing in the district. And then one of the furniture vendors that we use actually has, you know, something we could donate. Last year, we donated some lunchroom tables to some of the municipalities. So I might, depending what we have available, I'll reach out to, you know, several of the local municipalities to see if they, you know, can get in the type of furniture. And the stuff at Harris is, it's pretty old and beat up, so I don't think we'll be saving too much of Harris. But actually, we would take a lot of that stuff down to the recycling, like we did last year with a lot of the teacher desks. And some of this furniture that's out in the, in the schools is bad. It's really bad. So like Harris is gonna be unbelievable once you guys get a chance to look at what new furniture looks like for elementary students and the, the, the work that we did last year, obviously, is life and death compared to what we have out there, and hopefully we can continue to, you know, update our, our buildings.
Okay, the reason I was asking is because I, I know that we have a lot of things that we need to get rid of and, and clear out. And part of this is with the whole recycling and upcycling and things like that, do we have an opportunity to have, like, a, a sale of some of the salvageable stuff? Not, none of, you know, things that are mildly damaged and things like that? You, you'd be surprised at being able to get some of the old computer stuff out, some of the old, like?
Yeah, we, I looked at, last year, when we went through this process, I did reach out to an auction company for some of, like, the things we had. But like I said, some of our lunchroom tables that we were able to just donate to, you know, full croft or whatever the case may be, I, there wasn't like a, you know, an enormous, you know, cost that we could incur through that. But if we had that type of furniture, we would look into that.
Okay.
And just following up on Mrs. McGowan's question or comments. If you recall, when we did the enhancements last year, we had a resolution that the board approved to dispose of antiquated equipment. And then we keep a list of those things that, that are no longer usable and go into a dumpster, or they are set aside and, as Mr. Curry had mentioned, donated. Or if an auctioneer comes in and thinks that it's valuable, a valuable option for the district, we'll look at that as well. But there will be another resolution probably in July to dispose of antiquated equipment. But right now, Mr. Curry is saying that a lot of it can be redistributed in other buildings at this point. So I'm gonna jump on. So depending how we secured some of these equipment, materials, technology, also drives what we're allowed to do. So it's really important that Mr. Butler's office maintains things that we are either giving away or throwing away in case we're ever audited and we are following whatever rules we agreed to when we first purchased those items.
Okay, thank you.
So we're gonna now invite Mr. Russnoff to the podium to talk about safety.
Good evening. I just have a couple topics to go over for this evening. First, this summer, we're gonna be working on some projects with AES to replace and upgrade cameras throughout the district. Some of those schools are APHS, Sharon Hill, Delcroft, and Harris. Training, this past May 22nd and 23rd, we conducted threat, threat assessment training here. At that training, District Crisis Response Team, as well as Building Administration, participated in two-day training. And we also, just a couple weeks ago, June, this past week, June 12th and 13th, we had Alice training throughout the district, two days. Those were half-day sessions for each of the buildings in the district. As far as staffing goes, you've heard multiple times tonight that we've conducted interviews and where we're at right now in that process, waiting for your approval for a 12-month changeover. Any other questions? Missing something. What's that? Oh, not here. You're good. It didn't happen here.
We have one comment. You're the only comment, ma'am. Ms. Irons, you have three minutes. You don't have to state your address. You have three minutes, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening. I just have a question. Hold on, let me say this first. Dr. Sanchez, I would like to thank you. I'm looking at my notes from January 29th, the meeting right before you came on board, and one of the things that you said you were going to do is CIS communities and schools for attendance, so I would like to thank you because trust is a big thing in our community, and when you mean what you say and say what you mean, I do appreciate it. So I see one thing checked off this list. But moving down on the list, I have a question. Another thing you said is about audits, academic audits and I think financial audits. So where are we at in the process? Am I jumping the gun too? I never know. So I just wanted to get your feedback about audits and where we are at.
So during my interview and also at the presentation that I had at school, I talked about a number of audits, both academic and financial audits. School districts every year do their own audits. I've had a lot to learn about this district, and one of the things as it relates to the financial audit, will be first, hearing out what our auditors have to say. Before then, we have a conversation about the other potential audits that we can do. Being completely blind to this district and knowing what I know about things that happened in the past, it's really important that we regain trust with our community. And one way to do that is to do a series of various audits, to be determined based on what we learn. So right now, we're in the time where the actual annual audit is done. Additionally, moving forward, I'll be working very close with Dr. Laurie and Dr. Reddick-Smac to do an academic audit, to see where is it that we stand. And again, I came in here eyes and ears open. I've been meeting with constituents, external and internal, and I see great things happening. We're turning a corner as it relates to the curricular program and really, really impressed, not only from what the central office is doing, but for the way that teachers are hungry for improving their craft of being excellent teachers. We've done work around math. We are starting to work around science. We are starting to knock on the door of literacy and language arts. But now that I know what's, what, some of the efforts that we are working on, I still need to get the full picture. So that's work that Dr. Laurie, Dr. Reddick-Smac and myself will be leading. And as it relates to the financial audit, that's work that Mr., don't tell me I'm forgetting you, Greg Butler and I are going to be. So it's not, it's not a too early question to ask, it's something that I said I would do. I've checked off a few things, and I've been running like crazy trying to address lots of the issues that I've been learning about, which weren't, that weren't visible from the outside, but now that I'm on the inside, I see some great challenges. One, number one priority, and it's not, I'm not taking, I'm taking her time. One of my, one of my big priorities is making sure that we're fully staffed. In order for us to be academically successful, we have to have certified teachers in classrooms. So I'm proudly wearing the shirt. I'll be wearing it all over Delaware County, trying to steal teachers from other, from other school districts. We need to make sure we have that happening so that we can clearly assess what's happening academically in our buildings. So, but thank you for holding me to task, and I appreciate the question.
Thank you, Ms. Irons. Are there any more comments, Dr. Sanchez?
There are no more comments at this time.
Board members, any comments or concerns at this time? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Did you announce the future?
The future?
Teacher, the meeting?
No, I'm going to throw them next to it, all of them. The meeting for next Thursday, I'm sorry, School Board Business Meeting is Thursday, June 27th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Committee of the whole will be determined for July, and the School Board Business Meeting for Thursday, July 25th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is now adjourned, thank you. We will have an executive session? Or we won't wait till next week? Okay, we'll have an executive session next week. Thank you.